Historic Resources Commission meeting. Today is October 19th and it's 4:06 PM, or sorry, 4:04 PM here in 111 North Front Street, room 204. The next business meeting of the commission will be Thursday, November 2nd, 2023 at noon, 111 North Front Street, second floor, but room 205. The next hearing of the commission will be Thursday, November 16th at 4:00 PM here in room 204, 111 North Front Street. Jaclyn, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do, Jaclyn Mizell.
Wonderful, thank you. Introduction of the commissioners here present, starting at my far left.
Megasteno.
Tamika Bravo.
Joe McCabe.
Stuart Reaven.
And are there any items for public forum this evening?
There are no items for public forum. I do want to note just before we start that we have a commissioner who needs to leave at 4:45, so just to keep timing in mind.
Great, okay, thank you. Moving on to approval of the staff approvals.
Motion.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which is September 21st of 2023.
Motion to move this in.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes, means it can be approved. On to the applications for certificates of appropriate this evening and new applications, Jaclyn.
Okay, the first application is for 628 Oakwood Avenue, and this is for the proposed construction of a single-family home as well as the construction of a new garage. And currently, the site is a vacant lot and historically would have had a two-story brick, single-family home that was present but demolished, as well as a single-story wood frame automobile garage that was also demolished. So at the October 5th business meeting, the commissioners noted that most of what they're seeing looks like it could be approved once the details are aligned and fleshed out. The commissioners noted that the section drawings do not always match what is shown in the elevation drawings, so they want to make sure that these match, prevent any confusion in the field when construction commences. The commission noted that the floor plan of the rear porch appears a different size than what is shown in the elevations, so want to make sure that matches up. And the commission noticed that some notes say hardy trim, et cetera, will be installed while the drawings list composite freeze boards, so want to make sure to clarify which materials are proposed. The commission noted that aluminum wrap fascia and vinyl vented soffits are not typically approved, and weren't clear if this was proposed or part of the early drawing iteration, and then noted that venting of buildings in historic districts are typically performed on the roof ridge underneath the metal ridge roll, new hot vents or soffit vents. The commission noted that there seemed to be a missing barge board or trim between the clapboard siding at the second story and the stucco area at the attic level. The commission asked if the stucco goes up to the peak above the clapboard siding on the second floor, and the commissioner noted that many houses in the district have a similar look and just want to be sure that the new building is taking cues from those homes. And the commission noted that they were concerned whether there was enough spacing between the top of the porch roofs and the windows, and noted that five inches of space at the rear porch didn't seem to be enough for space for flashing. That would still maintain the warranty and allow space for the siding between the windows and the porch roof, so the commission suggested checking with manufacturers about spacing requirements for that warranty. The commission also recommended that the siding reveal be closer to the compatible three to five inch range, and asked whether the window mullions, spacing and style will be submitted on a window package or shown in the elevation drawings, and noted they were unclear whether the one over one windows are proposed throughout, or what did the elevation drawings show the window styles as proposed. And then the commission requested gutters and downspouts to be indicated in the drawings. So in response to the business meeting feedback, the applicant has submitted revised drawings, and then I believe actually there are some additional revisions submitted just yesterday, so I didn't get a chance to send those out, but they are included now in the materials on the screen and probably in the Kindles as well. And those just include the revision to the soffit, there's no longer the vinyl vented soffit, and then there has been window trim added, so those two items are more closer to the feedback that the commission had recommended. So in response to commission feedback, the applicant had submitted revised drawings and product information, calling out specifically sheets A3-1 and A1-1 for the rear porch. They noted that the composite freeze board spec has been removed and replaced with the hardy trim product, and that hardy product is proposed, and that a ridge vent will also be installed. The applicant noted that the siding design has been changed to full hardy plank siding installation, and that many houses on the street are either red brick or traditional lap siding, and so this hardy siding is intended to look similar to those. The applicant noted on sheet A2-1, the porch roof pitches front and rear have been reduced to four twelve to create more clearance, and that the hardy plank siding has been revised to require a four inch clearance, specifically calling out sheet A2-2. They noted that the single-hung Marvin Ultrix windows are being proposed and attached to brochure, and that three by five gutters have been added. So staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application HR2310009 at 628 Oakwood Avenue with the following conditions, that any porch railing details meet the HRC guidelines, and that the applicant submits proposed exterior light fixtures for future review. So the staff recommendation is based on the city code standards for new construction, just in general, as well as the HRC guidelines for garages and outbuildings on pages 85, and new construction on pages 90 to 93. And I'll turn over to the commission.
Okay, is there an applicant here this evening as well? If you can, come closer. And before you can sit, I'll have you ready. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes.
If you can state your full name and association with the property for record.
Barry Cummings, architectural designer.
Okay, wonderful, thank you Barry. Do you want to take a seat?
Yes, sir.
Barry, is there anything you would like to add before we ask questions or go over the application?
So I took the feedback from the commission and incorporated it in the last revision. I don't think it made it in time for Jaclyn's review. Everything is pretty much standard is what I've done with other projects for city build approval, so I did change the roofing and that configuration, and I did add the downspouts with the leading to the streets as well as to the alley for the garage. The vinyl siding for the garage was an oversight on my part because I used templates, and I didn't change the template, but it has now been revised and submitted, so.
Okay.
Pretty much that.
Okay.
What about the site? Who's going to be part of this approval?
Site plan as well as part of the approval.
No thing I'm proposing, I remember currently there's a tree that we saw on that site plan that we appreciated last time. So looking at the property itself, so that's also up for discussion.
So it's existing tree you're remaining on?
Yeah.
Still so?
Any additional plans for landscaping, things like that?
Just the front, just to make sure the profile fits the rest of the houses on the street, which is a decline of about four and a half feet from the bottom of the step to the sidewalk, so we plan on matching that, and that will be matched on final after we've instructed.
We, I think we need to see a plan of what, the planting plan for that?
Planting plan?
Can I put bushes in?
What's that?
What type of bushes or what have you, whatever your.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it doesn't look like we have like a, you know, we have nothing showing the sidewalk from the steps down to the street, so.
Okay.
If something could be, if staff could follow up with that, I think that would be, and that's not a whole stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so no, I can do an elevation plan, vegetation, shrubbery plan, that's pretty straightforward.
Is there a section, so the front, what are you treating the front given the, there's a slope right from sidewalk, I mean, there's a great change.
Yes.
Could you talk about how you're treating that?
So it's the, yeah, so it'll graduate from actually the elevation of the bottom of the step of the front porch to the street sidewalk, and that's about four and a half feet negative elevation.
You're just going to break it down and not going to put any?
No, no wall line.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's what we want to do.
As long as it matches what's left and right, I think that's the, that's the critical.
Yeah, that was the plan, so I, I know there's a multi-unit, if you're facing the building to the right, I think it has a wall to the, the homes to the left, and then the street before you get to the highway are graduated to the sidewalk, so.
Thanks for the window adjustment.
Real quick question, Jaclyn, are the windows that are proposed on the approval list?
They are, yes.
Yeah, great, okay. And I see we've got a, we've got the shingle called out, windows, there was a change, it looks like you've gone out all hardy siding, I don't have any problem with that, I think you probably got it.
I suspect that per shoe number, it's, I think it's five and a half with the four inch reveal to match the rest of the siding on the street.
Perfect.
You can do that on the garage as well.
Yeah, and I did update the garage profile to reflect that.
And staff's conditions were just that follow-up light fixtures and then handrails be detailed in accordance?
Fourth detail.
And landscape.
I'd like to make a motion for 01-HR-23-10-009-628 Oakwood Avenue to approve as submitted with the following conditions, to provide staff with a detailed porch drawing.
So I have that on page, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know what the word was.
Okay. To also provide cut sheets on all of the exterior light fixtures.
Okay.
And finally and additionally is the landscape plan, which shows vegetation integrated in the sidewalk and basically the topography and the layout.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Just having a motion and a second. Further discussion, an applicant, he wanted to say something.
What page?
Page 31, these rail in detail. So to the extreme right, and also details on the bottom left and middle.
Spindel rail block, looks like they're all square, two by two, two by four, is there any?
If it needs to match profile, that would be given as a prototype, that can be done. I mean, there's, I will send a prototype detail for the actual railing, if it needs to match out exactly, that's not an issue, it's just a skew.
Staff, do you have a recommendation for what you would prefer?
So I, we followed up with just an example from the guidelines, basically the main concern is just to avoid that suburban style with like the one panel only that shows up in the back and that kind of thing. What I'm seeing.
So that's like, that's like pickets between two pieces.
Yeah, yeah. So that's just the main.
I don't like that.
The problem is, is that the simply, the tap-dunk face picket is what ends up looking very suburban-like, right?
Yeah, just that avoiding.
Permission to make a comment?
Sure.
So I've done, guys, I'm a pro thirty home children's hospital, and that's their, that's their look, you know, the smart trim on the front, smart trim panel, sandwich B22, yeah. So I'm very familiar with that, and I try and stay away from that.
Yes, this looks a little bit different, and that's okay. That's just what the example of, you know, the reason that we sent it out to make sure it follows more closely with that, if that's going to be the style, since that's a style a lot of people go with.
So this is the, this is the two by twos though, and you're not, you're just face fastening it then to the two by number behind, is that?
It should show a header, yeah, so it has a header that goes full length, and then.
Right, but not on the face of it necessarily, correct?
It's on the face, it's on the back of the header.
Because like what, if I follow this section right here, that two by two is not really drawn to scale.
Okay.
Which is not, I mean, it's not going to look like, what was shown there if you zoom in on that section on the handrail?
It's like there's a board behind it.
It's, to me, it looks like this is a, there's a faceboard, there's a panel, and there's some two by behind it, and that looks like a solid thing. That doesn't really look like a two by two spindle in that drawing.
Okay.
And that's, you know, if you're saying that that's truly a two by two, just mounted, face screwed to a backing two by, I think it's going to look really suburban, I don't, I don't know that I can get there on that look of a handrail, I mean, that's not appropriate for a historic district?
Again, I could easily revise and reflect what was given to me, so.
As long as staff's okay with it, I think.
Yeah, the example that the applicant's referring to is from the guidelines.
Okay, okay, great. So there'd be a follow-up then with staff on that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Any clarification needed from staff?
No, I think we're good.
Moving to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number two, 618-620 South Ohio Avenue. Is anybody here for that? All right, come forward. If you want to raise your right hand a little bit, do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
Wonderful, state your full name and association, property record. Carrington Carter, property owner. Wonderful, thank you. Jaclyn.
This application is for 618-620 South Ohio Avenue, and the proposed work is for new construction for a new garage as well as general site work or hardscaping. So new garage would be single-story detached three-car garage, per those submitted materials, and this garage would be situated at the rear or west side of the property facing Bedford Alley. The site work would include installation of concrete walkways from the rear of the home to the pedestrian doors of the proposed garage, and the installation of a new six-foot-high wood board-on-board fence with the north and south property boundaries, and at the center of the rear yard to divide the unit yard spaces. So at the October 5th business meeting, the commission noted that they were okay with the general concept of the three-car garage, but emphasized that accuracy is needed and that the drawings and proposals should be consistent. And for, as an example, note that the drawing showed doors with no trim, but the door cut sheets do show trim, that the drawing showed dimensional shake-style shingles, although the notes do identify the approved shingle from the shingles list. And some drawings say final, others say hardy, and so the clarification on which is proposed. They noted that corner trim is called out but is not reflected on the drawings. The commission noted that the earlier architectural drawings show detailed proportions such as trim, the line weight of the foundation, detail to corners, but the later drawings did not show the details, including headers, trim, downspout locations, and gutters. The commission asked about paint colors such as for the siding, gutters, and downspouts. The commission requested measurements be included in the drawings such as door heights, spacing between the doors, and the measurements between the roof line and the ground. The commission asked to clarify the no hardware note and whether that hardware was referring to that there would be no handles on the garage doors. The commission asked whether any light fixtures are proposed, and if so, requested the locations be indicated on the drawings, and cut sheets of those proposed fixtures be included. The commissioners noted they were okay with the proposed sidewalks and the board-on-board style fencing. The commission asked about the unpainted vertical porch skirting, noting this did not appear to have been approved, and asked staff to confirm. So in response to the commission feedback, the applicant has revised the elevation drawings to indicate the trim, they've added notes and dimensions, the asphalt shingles have been changed so that they are now rendered to reflect the listed shingle. The applicant has removed the faux garage door handle hardware for clarification, and have highlighted areas where light fixtures are proposed. So staff, in general, is recommended, you know, clarification regarding the two elevation drawings with the details that may not match, such as the garage doors, pedestrian doors, foundation condition, and gutters, and recommend that any final elevation drawings that are revised include gutters and downspouts. And then for the porch skirting point, they did not appear to have been approved, we take a look at the two past COAs, including one initially approved and one revised, that don't show the vertical siding or an unpainted wood. So staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application HR2310010 at 618-619 South Ohio Avenue with the following conditions, that any gutters and downspouts are included on the elevation drawings with any revised drawings to be submitted to staff for final review and approval, and that any, the drawings be revised if they match. This recommendation is based on the city code 3116.112, Standards for New Construction, just in general, as well as the guidelines for garages and outbuildings, and the city code 3116.13, Standards for Site Improvements, specifically letters A and B, as well as the HRC guidelines for fences on page 76. And I'll turn over to the commission.
Wonderful. And does the applicant want to add anything before we start, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Just for clarity, again, there is confusing, conflicting elevations here. What is being now proposed for siding here?
Hardy.
Hardy, okay.
And there's a cut sheet.
Smooth, smooth hardy siding, I can see it. And what would be the overlap dimension on that?
It's supposed to be four inches, and it's like five and a quarter, four piece, so we've got.
Oh, okay, yeah. Four inches, so they're bad. Questions? And I think staff is just looking for clarification on downspouts and gutters at this point?
Anything on state plans, bushes, and we got our.
No.
Three inch with screening, light screening and so forth.
Okay.
We do have the light fixtures included.
It looks like in the, in the 16-page packet we now have promise on this too, is the fence in the yard splitting the yard in half off the table now?
No, I believe that's, is that still proposed, right?
It is, correct.
Okay, it is not in our packet, by the way. Though I don't recall any large objection to that fence, ton of the board-on-board fence and this was previously proposed, so perhaps there's a staff approval in order on that fence?
Yeah.
Or a clarification on that?
Where the sidewalks here as well?
Then I think the back.
There was a, there was a, there was a plan in our business meeting packet.
There was some plans from an earlier, maybe an earlier application, we do have a link to the previous materials.
So maybe, maybe in this case, we could approve at least the garage, and if there's a follow-up conversation about which, which plan and which fence, what goes where happens. And if there's any question from staff, you can always bring it back to us in the next business meeting.
And I think if there is, if there is all that, then maybe even a simple site plan would be good to then show the location.
Give a site plan in the packet?
No.
It shows the fence and sidewalks?
We did not show the fence.
Okay, so maybe you can have your architect whip that up with your sidewalks.
Do you want to bring up the previous packet? I usually hate to dwell on previous packets, but.
You know, I think it's linked in the staff reports, or, or inbox, yeah. So number two.
There we go. So if there's no objection to the commission here, and if the commission were to approve this plan subsequent to the applicant referring to staff that this is what he would like, then I think we can take action on this, correct? It's just this one plan being submitted, but everybody would be okay with that, seeing that's shaking objections.
Yep.
Is this what you're looking for? I just want to verify with you, you're the applicant?
Still going down this path.
And the clarification, Jaclyn, you're okay with what, I mean, there's obviously what's on record here.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then downspouts, gutters, making sure all that's correlated in the drawing?
Yeah, just make sure that they're included.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Sure. Make motion to approve HR2310010 with the caveat that the applicant will include this site plan as part of the final package and work with staff to make sure that appropriate drawings and details of the downspout, et cetera, shown.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any further clarity you need, Jaclyn?
I would say just, I want to confirm, because there's one drawing that shows slightly different garage doors, and I don't believe that's being proposed, but maybe just a confirmation since we do have the two elevation drawings.
And so for clarity purposes, which of the, you're proposing this is the garage door, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so with the confirmation on record that this being the garage door, I think this is all in the cut sheets as well. Great, okay.
What's the name of this door, is there?
There is a cut sheet, I have to.
Do you know the name of the door, sir?
Um, Heritage Security House.
Heritage Security.
Yeah, Heritage Security House, it's actually in the packet. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is a conceptual application for 162 West Jeffrey Place. Come forward. If you would raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
If you can state your full name and association with the property for record.
Rodney Oates, and owner.
Okay, wonderful, welcome, Jaclyn.
Okay, this application for 162 West Jeffrey Place is conceptual. The proposal is to create a second-story balcony by converting an existing sunroom roof into a deck, and converting second-floor window or windows into a deck door and installing a railing. So at the October 5th business meeting, the commission noted that a balcony at that proposed location is compatible with this style of home as shown in the applicant's materials packet. Some commissioners were comfortable with the idea of converting two of the windows to doors due to early designs of the Dutch Colonial Revival Homes also having two doors at the balconies. Other commissioners were concerned about altering both windows since they are historic. The commission noted when the application comes for action review and approval, they'll need to see drawings of the deck and details of how this will work with the sunroom, such as what will be removed from the sunroom roof and what will be added. The commission noted that they are comfortable with the French door style indicated. In response to the commission feedback, the applicant has submitted a plan view drawing. So this is a conceptual application, so the staff recommendation is that the commission should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant for a future, or to refine the proposal for a future HRC meeting, and so no action is required. The basis for the staff recommendation are the city code 316.11, Standards for Alteration, specifically numbers one, two, three, five, 10, and 12, as well as the HRC guidelines regarding porches and stoops, which are most closely related to what the proposal is here, and that's on pages 18 and 19. And I'll turn over to the commission.
Wonderful. What could the applicant add?
We were planning on just doing one door.
Oh, just one, okay.
Yeah. Of course, we're just working with the contractor now and architect, so it might take a little bit of time, but we have to do some exploratory about what's existing, and of course, the roof would probably be more than this.
Yep, yeah, if anything, I thought you might, you might be more in studying, actually to make sure you've got the bearing capacity of the doors right.
Right, that's modern, modern directors.
I was enamored only because these are kit homes, and this is, this is sort of like, had you proposed two doors anyways, that would have been in line with the original kit that you could have ordered.
Oh, interesting.
They made these bars, like houses, and yeah, you've got a photo early in the packet, and I've seen this house and I've seen that kit before, so, to me, it's sort of interesting when you get that kind of thing, because you've got it right there in the left image, in fact, or in the bottom right, it's the same thing, like there's the, there's the handrail, and, and, so there is historic precedent in this style of home having that.
The thing that's interesting to me are the two windows are different sizes.
Oh, wait. You got our attention, you're all.
Well, actually, the ones that are higher up are slightly different as well from the aesthetic in photo. Is one operable and one is fixed?
No, they're both operable.
Oh, are they? Okay, that's interesting.
Well, that isn't.
Yeah, they're just different, they're different sizes, and one on the left is a little bit smaller.
Smaller.
And for one.
Are you kind of planning other conceptual changes to the lower portion of the house depending on how the deck condition is?
At this time, I'm a little frustrated by the bay windows, they're great to have, but they're not historic, you know, I don't know when that's, we've just been in the house now quite five years.
We may be okay? We may be okay if you propose those going away, Barry.
Yeah, there's, there's a few things as well as the back of the house, that they did that addition, it's like, man, this is my fifth house, the most, newest of my five houses, it was nineteen thirty, so. I love old houses, I love historic.
Central Ohio or different?
Um, yeah, and I'm not flipping houses, it's just.
Your appreciation for.
We did notice that this exact image, by the way, that's in your packet here, is actually probably likely what your back of your own house used to look like too, before they put the addition on, so.
Oh, I have to pay attention to that, yeah. I love the addition, but it's ugly.
We're trying to recognize.
We have a great house, and a apartment of walking closet, and it's just a.
Looks functional.
We may, yeah, we may propose a window or something on that at some point, just to kind of get it to be right. We also, years ago, put my art studio on the garage, and tried to make it as close as we could, so, doing one project at a time.
Looks like a great project, I mean, I think you're on path, I think that, I think it's within keeping of the style and structure, while it's even an option. I don't have any issues with it. I get it through the line.
I was gonna say, I don't have any issues, you've answered all my questions.
As long as the doors are, are appropriate for the structure in their own.
Doors are door.
Or where we choose, yeah.
I just want to say that first couple of slides, they're just so helpful, like graphically and all that, especially conceptual projects, they're good to have, so.
Kudos to the.
Yeah, sort of stuff.
You'll have drawings to come up with to go with your dream, but, you know, at least having conceptually, I think we're, we're there if you're going to propose this.
What are you thinking of starting the project?
As soon as we get all set to go, I mean, we're kind of, start, this is very conceptual, we've been talking about it for a couple of years, and so, but we don't have, the staff will get the architect drawings and stuff like I said, the twenty-sixth, I mean, we'll have to make that, have to get it to you, is it all right to do this?
You can take as long, or as little as time, or as long as time you want to get to that point, so.
We're interested, I mean, I don't know if we'll make this season or not, but sometimes it's better to do it in the winter, it's a little bit slower, so.
And you just want to call up, if you're going to only use one, which side it is?
It'd be the one on the right.
And then ask you every, every, some of those.
Great, I look forward to seeing architectural drawings.
And if the window is solid, save the window.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I'm sure there's something real similar to that somewhere in there.
I just came out of the basement renovating, kitchen windows down, one window at a time, about two or three windows at a time, I strip them all the way down.
All glazing?
All the glazing.
You're a good man.
Hundred years of paint.
But those windows will probably last longer than any.
I know, yeah. The frustrating thing maybe is that they don't make storms in Columbus anymore. I have to order them from Texas, although the ones from Texas are really good quality. So I started with one, and did two more, and just worked my way around. I'm a big advocate of these center door windows. Next year's our, this is nineteen twenty-four, so next year we're celebrating.
Big party next year, on the porch.
Wait, capacity issues.
Great, well, it sounds like since it's conceptual, there's no formal action, so if you have any other questions for us, great, I can jump right now.
We're just happy that we could get this far.
Well, it's great, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, I love you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Jacklin, are there any other items of, have another application, any other items of new business?
We don't have any items of new business currently on the agenda. As you probably saw, I did send out emails for anticipated new business in December, so just send that out, that way you don't have time to look at it, or if you have any questions, can bring it up, send it to, you know, me at any time.
I think it seems straightforward to email, I think it seems to be the right thing to do.
Did you even still like, printed the linen and already been done?
No, I don't think so, it's just to make sure, you know, you understand like what it is, and, you know, that whole thing.
And just from a, from a technicality standpoint, you'll have, they'll come in, and we'll solve it in all of a sudden.
Yes, that's my understanding, yeah, so try to make it quick and easy.
Full answer.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I was gonna say, is any items of old business before I?
I don't have any items for old business.
Having no, if I have some old business, I'll say aye or motion to adjourn. Motion, second, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post abstention, motion passes, meeting is adjourned here at four thirty-nine P. M.
Okay.